Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the November nineteenth, two thousand and twenty five Board of Commissioners Legislative Meeting. I'm going to call the meeting to order. It is seven thirty seven P. M. Apologize for being a couple of minutes late. And we're going to start as we always do with our Pledge of Allegiance, which Commissioner Lewis is going to do the honors. Thank you, Commissioner Lewis. You zipped right through that. Item number two, roll call manager Elliot, will you please call the roll?
Yes, good evening. Commissioner Arman.
Here.
Commissioner Brockington.
Here.
Commissioner Cherico.
Here.
Commissioner Lewis.
My apologies, here.
Commissioner Norris.
Here.
Commissioner Rappaport.
Here.
Commissioner Zickmanfeld.
Here.
The one's here.
Thank you. Moving on to item number three, the Sunshine Act announcement, I'll ask our solicitor, Mr. D'Azio, to give that announcement.
Thank you. Good evening. The board has had two executive sessions since the last board meeting. One executive session was on November twelfth. The subject matter of the executive session was a number of matters of police personnel and collective bargaining. And then the board also met this evening prior to tonight's public meeting to discuss a number of matters of litigation, one involving the ongoing litigation with the former O'Gans Fire Company, one matter of potential litigation with PICO, and one matter of imminent domain litigation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. D'Azio. Moving on to item number four, public comment on agenda items. This is the time during the meeting when members of the public may provide public comment on anything that is on the agenda. I will tell you or remind you that there will be opportunities for other public comment, both during Citizens Forum at the end of the meeting and as we go through some of the agenda items presented at the time they are presented. So we'll start here in the hall. We have one person who wants to speak for public comment on agenda items. So, Mr. Lieberson, please. Let's make sure your microphone's on before we start.
Thank you. Good evening. I suspect this will be the final time, Mark Lieberson, tax collector, finance officer, I'm sorry. I suspect this will be, this was, I suspect this will be the final time I'll be formally addressing you as a township tax collector. I want to take this opportunity of formally introducing my successor, who was elected on November fourth, Mr. Melvin Pitts. Melvin or not Melvin? Melvin and I will be spending the next month and a half working together on the changeover with the goal of seamless transition. I'm confident Melvin will continue to work initiative initiated over the next, continue the work initiated over the past four and a half years, the same level of focus and dedication, moving forward with success. As I prepare to leave office, while some may not agree, it's my belief that a successful fifty-four months, we've increased the collection of five eleven business privileged mercantile tax by almost a hundred percent reaching in two thousand and twenty-five plus three point five million dollars to date, benefiting not only the township but the Cheltenham School District as well, as mercantile revenue has also dramatically increased. However, as I've been stating over the past several years, this is just the tip of the iceberg, a drop in the bucket. With the continued assistance and involvement of our auditor C biz, and with more collection resources provided to the tax office by both the township and school district, along with more focused code and four features, we can most certainly, in my estimation, surpass five million dollars a year annually for the township and approach perhaps in excess of one million dollars for the school district collections per year. So in closing, I want to thank and acknowledge my staff, Shari Jaikman, my right-hand assistant, the deputy tax collector. I also want to thank Donna Dolan and Barbara Dittness, who are also integral major parts of the tax office operation. The work we've completed and what has been accomplished could not have been done without these fine dedicated people. Shari, Donna, Barbara, I applaud you. I want to thank the administration and the Board of Commissioners. What we've done could not have become a reality without your support. Finally, and most importantly, it's been an honor and privilege serving my community, my fellow Chetonians. It's been indeed a pleasure. Thank you and happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark. Mark, thank you for those words. I hope you join us for the Finance Committee meeting in December, so don't disappear just yet. Fair enough. I think I speak on behalf of the board and staff, thanking you, Mark, for your dedication. Your hard work on behalf of the township is truly appreciated. And not only your dedication in terms of doing your job, collecting taxes, but being at the tax office five days a week, being responsive to constituents who had questions or concerns or needed help with various issues is all extremely commendable. And we, we're all sure and confident that Mr. Pitts will, he's got big shoes to fill, but we'll be able to do that and with the same level of dedication that Mark has exhibited. So, thank you. Thank you both. Look forward to working with you, Mr. Pitts. Oh, and of course, Mark said it, but I'll reiterate it. A tax collector is only as good as their staff, right? So we thank, we thank the staff in the tax office for all their dedication and support, not only of Mark, but on behalf of the township. So, thank you. Welcome. Just state your name and the area of the township where you live.
Mindy Waldman, and we live on Surrey Road. I came out for the ordinance on Surrey Road to have a no parking sign. They recently made a bump out on the sidewalk, so it allows about one cars width to get into the road. And our bus driver, our children's bus driver, we have two daughters, and he's having a very difficult time because cars park all along the road when they're trying to drop their kids off to Myers. So I know I'm not the only one who called in, but I just wanted to, we're just coming out in support of that, and thank you for enforcing it because it really makes a difference to the bus driver and to us in getting our child home safely. The bus driver wanted to change his stop, and it was a bit of a thing, so thank you for that. And yeah, that's all we came out for. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Thanks for your support. Anyone else here in the hall? All right, seeing none, we'll move to Zoom. I see two residents with their hands up. We'll start with Julie Haywood.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Julie Haywood. I'm a resident of Wingcoat, a community member, library cardholder and president of the library board. I'm here this evening to offer some comments about the proposed adoption of the preliminary two thousand and twenty-six operating and capital budget that's on tonight's agenda. This evening, the commissioners will be presenting a proposed preliminary budget for two thousand and twenty-six. At the budget hearings and during the recent presentation by the township manager and finance director, the preliminary budget includes a proposed nine percent tax increase and a hundred thousand dollars budget reduction the Cheltenham Township Library System. Respectfully, we asked the commissioners to reconsider the proposed budget reduction to the library and consider either flat funding or a reduction in the cut. We do appreciate the significant budget crisis the township is facing, not just this year, but in the coming years, and the extremely difficult decisions that you have to make over the next couple of months. As we shared in a letter to the commissioners and during our November twenty-first community informational meeting, there are real impacts that will result from the proposed hundred thousand dollar funding cut and what this means for library services, program staff, and the community. We do appreciate the informal meetings we had with a few of the commissioners to answer questions and provide any additional information. I wanted to provide some context for my comments, in part based on the informational meeting that took place on November the twenty-first. During this meeting, Mary Kay, the executive director of C T L S, shared how our libraries are funded, where the money goes, and how our community can help shape the future of the library. In two thousand and twenty-five, the library operated on a budget of a little over two point two million dollars. One point eight, a little over one point eight million was from the township, a hundred and fifty-seven thousand from the state, a hundred and forty-two thousand, a little over that, of donations of which a hundred and four were from the Friends Groups, Glenside Friends and Elkins Park Friends. The township appropriation of the library is approximately five percent of your overall expenditures. With flat funding by the township in two thousand and twenty-five, the library was able to operate at its current capacity, but did not fill vacant positions, reduced the open season for the community center locations as well. Over this period of time in two thousand and twenty-five, we had an increased number of visitors to the library and expect to have the same number of programs offered this year. In two thousand and twenty-five, we saved taxpayers over two point six million dollars for books and ebooks that were borrowed. C T L S continues to do more with less, and as good partners, we're willing to continue to do so. However, we want to be clear to the community, there are real impacts to what C T L S can do based on its funding. And just for an example, and I'll close shortly, if there's a fifty thousand dollar reduction in library funding, this would mean no change in hours at E P in Glenside, no staffing reductions, and no change in programs and services, slight reduction in the collection budget, two percent cost of living adjustments for staff.
Ms. Haywood, I'm sorry, I'm gonna have to ask you to wrap it up. You're already at five minutes almost.
Okay. So, and at a hundred thousand dollar budget reduction, we would face reduced hours at E P in Glenside, most likely Sunday closures, reduced collections budget, no cost of living adjustments for staff. We're asking the commissioners to consider flat funding or reducing the overall one hundred thousand dollar budget cut. We're also asking the community to attend the Public Affairs and Finance Committee meetings on December the tenth. And we're also asking for partnership ideas, increased donations during our annual appeal, and, you know, asking your employers if they have a matching program. Just want to close in saying that the library is not just about books and CDs. It's a gathering place for our community to learn, grow, and share. So please take our request under consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Haywood.
And sorry if I went over the time limit.
That's okay. Ms. Melton, I see your hands up.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I have just a question in regards to what's on the agenda for the change in, oh gosh, my phone rang at the time, in the change in the M, no, zoning two ninety-five section. And the.
Ms. Melton, would you be kind enough to just let us know which agenda item you're referring to so we could look at it?
Okay, hold on. Give me one second. Let me go back to it. It's the public hearing for changing your ordinance, number eight, two ninety-five, number nine, two ninety-five. As I started to read the agenda that is shown, my only question is, where are the M three districts that we are trying to, or the township is trying to make these changes? I only ask that because years ago, when there was the comprehensive plan and there was some zoning, there's some multiple use that is either within, I know in the Lamont's area, there's open space, there's commercial, there's residential. Next adjacent to it is multiple use. So I'm trying to see because what wasn't presented in this public meeting is some type of map of where these districts are even located. So as a resident, I'm kind of concerned where these mixed districts are are going to be located if we change the existing ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Melton. I'm gonna just ask Mr. D'Azio to make a few comments in response. And hopefully that'll address some of your concerns, but just know that when we get to items eight and nine, we will be having a public hearing, so you'll get a lot more information on both of those items.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you. And as Commissioner Arment stated, we do have two public talking about these two ordinance amendments, but the zoning map is not changing. So the location of any of the zoning districts is not changing. There's an extensive zoning map on the township's website. We could certainly share it with you. And you can see where on the map the different properties are, but the ordinances tonight don't actually change, you know, which areas of the township are zoned residential or commercial or any of the other zoning classifications. There's just some changes to some of the rules within those zones.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Melton. Any other public comment on agenda items, either here in the hall or on Zoom? All right, seeing none, we'll close public comment and move on to item number five, approval of the Board of Commissioners regular meeting minutes dated October twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five, and the minutes of the special meeting of the Board of Commissioners dated November fifth, two thousand and twenty-five. Any comments or questions on those? All right, seeing none, I'll move for approval. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all. Item number six, acceptance of the executive summary financial report for the month of September, two thousand and twenty-five. I will move for acceptance. Any comments or questions there? All right, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item number seven, acceptance of the accounts paid report for the month of September, two thousand and twenty-five. I will move for acceptance. Comments or questions there? All right, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. On to item number eight, we have a public hearing to receive any and all comments and suggestions from the public regarding an ordinance amending chapter two ninety-five zoning article fifteen M U three mixed-use districts to modify certain design and development standards for a class-three special exemption. In exception, excuse me, in the M U three mixed-use district, there's an attachment. I will turn it over to our solicitor, Mr. D'Azio, for the public hearing, and this is being transcribed.
Yes, so this is one of the two items on the agenda this evening where we have a public hearing. So if there is a motion from the board to open the public hearing?
I will so move. Any comments or questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor for, to open the public hearing on item number eight, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. So the public hearing on agenda number eight is now open. I do see that we have our stenographer here in the, in the audience who's transcribing this hearing for us. So as Commissioner Arment stated, the purpose of tonight's public hearing is to receive any and all comments and suggestions from the public regarding an ordinance amending chapter two ninety-five zoning article fifteen M U three mixed-use districts to modify certain design and development standards for a class-three special exception in the M U three mixed-use district. There is an attachment. Before we begin, there are eleven exhibits that I will read into the record this evening. So we have exhibit number one is the attested ordinance. Exhibit number two is the proof of publication for legal notices published in the Times Herald on Saturday, October twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-five, and Saturday, November first, two thousand and twenty-five. Exhibit three is an email filing the attested ordinance with the Montgomery County Law Library dated November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Exhibit number four is the posting of legal notice on the bulletin board at the Township Administration Building dated October seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Exhibit number five is the posting of legal notice on the township website dated November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Exhibit number six is proof of submission to the Montgomery County Planning Commission dated September twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five. Exhibit number seven is a review letter from the Montgomery County Planning Commission dated October twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five. Exhibit number eight is the Cheltenham Township Planning Commission Review Letter dated October twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-five. Exhibit number nine is the recommendation to advertise by the Building and Zoning Committee dated September third, two thousand and twenty-five. Exhibit number ten is the authorization to advertise a public hearing by the Board of Commissioners dated September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five. And finally, exhibit number eleven is the recommendation for approval by the Building and Zoning Committee dated November fifth, two thousand and twenty-five. So with, with that, if there are any members of the public that are in the audience this evening, or anyone on Zoom that would like to offer comment on this proposed ordinance, now would be the time to either step forward to the podium or raise your hand in the Zoom room, and you will have an opportunity to be heard. All right, I don't see anyone in the hall and on Zoom. I do see that we have one hand raised. Darlene Melton.
Okay, good evening, Darlene Melton, resident of Lamont. Um, my only question is exactly what is a class-three special exemption? And I only ask that because, again, with past history, when a specific location within the township, it appeared that an ordinance was being changed to allow developer to be able to easily, yeah, I'll say it way easily, without having to go maybe for variances and things of that nature. And then as soon as the time passed and years passed and they couldn't get what they wanted, the ordinance was then changed back and dropped. So I hate to say it, but I'm kind of leery now when I see variances, not variances, uh, changes to ordinances that allow certain things to occur. I just don't know what a special, a class-three special exemption is to be able to say, you know, I like, you know, the changes or I don't, because I just don't know. So can someone explain what a class-three special exemption is in the mixed use?
All right, so we're going, at this point, we, since we are in a public hearing, we have to continue with the public comment.
Well, that's my comment. I don't know to be able to say to you in the face, it doesn't look right if you want me to say that because of what happened in the past. It just looks kind of strange. And like, why are we doing it? Why are we doing it? What's so wrong with our two ninety-five, which over so many years keeps on coming back to make sure that we are making our ordinances to comply with state and federal laws? So now why all of a sudden are we trying to change it to allow some special classification? And again, I'm reading what you attached for the public to read, and all I see is, you know, barber shops and something else and.
Ms. Melton, thank you for those comments because we're in a public hearing.
I know, three minutes.
We're, well, because we're in a public hearing, we have to continue with the public comment. But I assure you, when the public comment is closed, I will ask Mr. D'Azio to elaborate on the questions that you are asking at this time, okay?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, is there, I don't see anyone else on Zoom. I do see one individual in the hall here, so ma'am, please feel free to step forward. If you could state your name and where in the township you reside.
Monica Harrower Glenside. I'm, I'm here with a similar question. I don't really understand what these things mean on this agenda. So I understand you are going to explain this after the public comment, but it does seem, it's very vague for, you know, people who don't know this kind of speak. I don't understand. I don't write this. I don't review this. So it just, I wish that the township would be a little more explicit or give more explanation about what exactly it is. You know, I'm wondering, does this mean apartments? I really don't know. So anything you can do to elaborate and give more information is really helpful. Thank you.
All right, I don't see anyone else in the hall or online who is wishing to make comments so we can end the comment portion of the public hearing. Now would be the time for the Board of Commissioners to have any discussion that they wish to have.
So if I may, I'll start. And just to put some context around this ordinance change, this, just for everyone's benefit, both here in the hall and on Zoom, number one, there is an attachment that goes through what this ordinance change suggests. We'll, I'm gonna ask as part of my comment to to have Mr. D'Azio elaborate on what the, what the purpose of this is. But I will also mention that this is not the first time we're hearing about this. This came up in a committee meeting several months ago, and then was moved to advertisement. It's been advertised and then came up again in earlier this month in a committee meeting. And I now is here before this board on the ordinance change. So there's been a lot of robust discussion about this. There have been presentations. So if folks have questions, because they're seeing this for the first time, completely understandable. But, but I assure you, it's not, it's not the first time we're seeing it, and it's not the first time it's been out in the, in the public. But with that, and I will turn it over to Commissioner Rappaport in just a second, I would ask in response to the questions that were asked during the public comment portion of the hearing, if Mr. D'Azio would elaborate on what the changes are that are being, are being voted on this evening.
Sure. So I'm looking at the draft ordinance that the commissioners are considering this evening. On page one of the ordinance, there's a section two ninety-five dash fifteen oh one D, which talks about certain uses that are permitted as class-three uses in the M U three district. And if you continue on to the second page, those are the types of uses that you're seeing as being permitted or not permitted. So there are, the document is redlined to show which uses are being taken away. And the under, you know, the, the language that is underlined is the language that's being proposed to be added. Keep in mind that these class-three uses that we're talking about only apply to properties that have a gross lot area of eighty acres or greater. So those are the types of properties that we would be talking about when we're looking at this section of the zoning code. The board and the public are familiar. We actually have one property that's currently being developed under this section of the code. It's the former Melrose Country Club property. There are other properties in the township that if developed would be developed under these rules. But those are the types of properties that we're talking about, and those are the types of uses that we're talking about.
Thank you, Mr. D'Azio. Commissioner Rappaport.
Yeah, I just, before we begin a public hearing, maybe a little summary could have saved us about fifteen minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioner comments? All right, seeing none, do I make a motion to close the public hearing at this point?
Correct.
So I will move to close the public hearing, having heard all the public comments and the commissioner's comments. All those in favor say aye.
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 All right, and with and with that, the public hearing is closed. And at this point in time, any commissioner can make a motion on the underlying agenda item.
All right, so I will then thank you for that guidance. I will make a motion to adopt the ordinance amending chapter two ninety five zoning, Article fifteen MU three mixed-use districts to modify certain design and development standards for class three special exception in the MU three mixed-use district. Any comments or questions on the motion? Yeah. Manager Elliott, would you please provide an ordinance number and call the roll?
Yes, that is ordinance number twenty five zero two dash twenty five. Commissioner Arman.
Aye.
Commissioner Brockington.
Aye.
Commissioner Cherico.
Aye.
Commissioner Lewis.
Aye.
Commissioner Norris.
Aye.
Commissioner Rapaport.
Aye.
Commissioner Zignifeld.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right. Thank you, Manager Elliott, and thank you, my fellow board members. Moving on then to item number nine. Again, a public here, a new public hearing to receive any and all comments and suggestions from the public regarding an ordinance amending chapter two ninety five zoning, Article three, definitions, Article eight MU one mixed-use districts, and Article twenty three parking and loading to permit medical marijuana dispensaries in certain portions of the MU one mixed-use zoning district by special exception where certain criteria are met. Again, this is something that has come up a number of times and been the subject of discussion and clarification and taking Commissioner Rapaport's suggestion to heart. Before we open the public hearing, I'm going to ask Mr. Diazio to provide a very brief summary of of what we will be having a public hearing about in this item.
Sure. Thank you, Commissioner Arman. All right, so the next item that the board will be considering is a public hearing. It is also an amendment to the zoning code. And in this case, for this ordinance that the board is considering, the board is considering adding a medical marijuana dispensary use to the township code. And there are a number of rules and regulations that'll apply to that use if it were, if someone were to propose to bring that use to the township. Now, the relevant background here is that a number of years ago, the board adopted a very similar ordinance to the one that it's considering this evening. But because of some overarching zoning code, comprehensive zoning code changes that were happening at that time, the ordinance that the board approved a number of years ago never made its way into the zoning code book. And so what you're seeing here this evening is a substantially similar type of ordinance that is taking the medical marijuana dispensary use and is and is adding it to the zoning code as a permitted use in certain places under certain conditions. And those places and conditions that apply are outlined in the ordinance. There are numbers one through fifteen. So if the the question that we get most frequently is where where would these potential dispensaries go? And item number four in the ordinance answers that question. We're talking about located on properties that are located on or that have frontage on the eastern side of Old York Road between Elkins Avenue and Star Road. So that is the area of the township that we're talking about. There are also provisions in the ordinance that talk about hours of operation. I'm not going to read the whole ordinance, but the but the ordinance is available to the public. That's the background for the for the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Diazio. So with that, I will make a motion to open the public hearing on this item. All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you. Good evening. So now that the public hearing is opened, I can announce that this is the time and the place for a public hearing to receive any and all comments and suggestions from the public regarding an ordinance amending chapter two ninety five zoning, Article three definitions, Article thirteen mixed-use MU one mixed-use districts, and Article twenty three parking and loading to permit medical marijuana dispensaries in certain portions of the MU one zoning district by special exception when certain criteria are met. There is a proposed ordinance that is attached and is part of the agenda this evening. Just as I did in the prior hearing, I'm going to read into the record a number of exhibits for this evening. Exhibit number one is the attested ordinance. Exhibit number two is the proof of publication for legal notices published in the Times Herald on Saturday, October twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty five, and Saturday, November first, two thousand and twenty five. Exhibit number three is the email filing the attested ordinance with the Montgomery County Law Library dated November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty five. Exhibit number four is the posting of legal notice on the bulletin board at the Township Administration Building dated October seventeenth, two thousand and twenty five. Exhibit number five is the posting of the legal notice on the township website dated November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty five. Exhibit number six is proof of submission to the Montgomery County Planning Commission dated September twenty third, two thousand and twenty five. Exhibit number seven is a review letter from the Montgomery County Planning Commission dated October twenty third, two thousand and twenty five. Exhibit number eight is the Cheltenham Township Planning Commission Review Letter dated October twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty five. Exhibit number nine is the recommendation to advertise by the Building and Zoning Committee dated September third, two thousand and twenty five. Exhibit number ten is the authorization to advertise a public hearing by the Board of Commissioners dated September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty five. And last, exhibit number eleven is the recommendation for approval by the Building and Zoning Committee dated November fifth, two thousand and twenty five. So now that the exhibits have been read into the record, if there are any individuals who are present here in the hall or anyone that is attending virtually online, if you have any comments on the proposed ordinance, now would be the time to step forward to the podium or to raise your hand on the Zoom screen to be heard. All right, I don't see anyone approaching the podium here in the hall, and I don't see anyone with hands raised on the Zoom. So this would be now the time for the commissioners to have any discussion about the proposed ordinance.
Any comments by anyone on the board? Commissioner Zignifeld.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this ordinance reflects, you know, the memorializing of, I guess, the restored dispensary in Elkins Park. There's a question, if there is ever legislation in the state that passes recreational marijuana use, will we have to amend or create an additional or different ordinance to cover those specifications?
Yes, this ordinance just covers the medical marijuana dispensaries.
And if there are additional applicants who want to, who who want to put up a medicinal marijuana thing within the township that's not in proximity of the restore facility, I know right now this has the current location of the restore facility. But if it was proposed in a different area of the township, would they have to come to us and request an amended ordinance?
There there would be an application to the township, which would then be heard by the Township Zoning Hearing Board initially.
Thank you, Mr. Diazio.
Thank you, Commissioner Zignifeld. Any other comments from the board during the public hearing? All right, seeing none, I will move move to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you, and thank you to our stenographer for being here this evening.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, so with that, I will move on item nine A for adoption of an ordinance, chapter two ninety five zoning, excuse me, adoption of an ordinance, chapter two ninety five zoning, Article three definitions, Article eight MU one mixed-use district, and Article twenty three parking and loading to permit medical marijuana dispenser dispensaries in certain portions of the MU one mixed-use zoning district by special exception when certain criteria are met. Any comments or questions? All right. Manager Elliott, would you please provide an ordinance number and call the roll?
Yes, that is ordinance number twenty five zero three dash twenty five. Commissioner Arman.
Aye.
Commissioner Brockington.
Aye.
Commissioner Cherico.
Aye.
Commissioner Lewis.
Aye.
Commissioner Norris.
Aye.
Commissioner Rapaport.
Aye.
Commissioner Zignifeld.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Manager Elliott. Okay. You're off the hook. Yes. Thank you for your service. Yeah. On to item number ten, the Public Works Committee met on November fifth. Commissioner Zignifeld chairs that committee. Commissioner Zignifeld, please address item number ten for us if you.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Public Works Committee did meet on the on the fifth of November, and there are four items under consideration. Item ten A, adoption of a resolution granting conditional approval and associated waivers for a final land development application, CTDA twenty five dash fourteen F Cedar Brook Middle School, three hundred Longfellow Road, Windcoat PA for the proposed construction of two buildings for a total of eighteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-two square feet with parking improvements and addition of eleven parking spaces, stormwater and other related site improvements. And there is an extended attachment. And I'll ask if there are any questions or comments from members of the board on the proposed approval for the for the land development for Cedar Brook Middle School. I see none, Mr. President. So on that basis, I will move for approval of of the adoption of this resolution so that the school district can move forward with the additional construction to accommodate the expanded population that that needs to be available, that needs available space.
Thank you, Commissioner Zignifeld. Any comments or questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you, Mr. President. Item ten B, adoption of a resolution granting conditional approval and associated waivers for a phase two preliminary slash final land development application, CTDA twenty five dash fifteen F enclave at Melrose, seventy-six hundred, Tuckney Creek Parkway, Cheltenham PA, which will consist of a three-story assisted and independent living facility that is eighty-eight thousand square feet, a four-story, two hundred forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty square foot medical office building, and a two-story parking structure adjacent to the medical office building. There is an attachment. And again, this is part of a continuing a level of review and approvals that have occurred over the last, I guess, five to seven months for the development at the former Melrose Country Club. And there'll be continuing scrutiny by the Board of Commissioners and by the various committees as we move into the final land development or different phases of land development process. I'll ask if there are any additional questions or comments from members of the board. I see none. So, Mr. President, I will move that that the the board votes to grant the conditional approval and associated waivers for the phase two preliminary final land development application for the enclave at Melrose Park with the specifics included in the attachment.
Thank you, Commissioner Zignifeld. We have a motion for approval. Any comments or questions on Commissioner Zignifeld's motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Item ten C, authorization for Gannett Fleming to proceed with engineering services related to the Houston Road Stormwater Improvement Project in an amount not to exceed seventy-five thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars, pending approval through the granting agency. Questions or comments from members of the board on this? I see none. So, Mr. President, I will move that we authorize Gannett Fleming to move forward for this Houston Road Stormwater Improvement Project.
Thank you, Commissioner Zignifeld. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of the authorization say aye.
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 Item ten D, adoption of a resolution authorizing staff to submit a grant under the two thousand and twenty five PICO Green Region Open Space Program for the Renninger Park Tree Restoration and Education Project in the amount of ten thousand dollars and committing to funding the remaining costs of the project. Are there any questions or comments from members of the board? I'll just ask if we have an estimated amount for any of what those remaining costs could be. I don't know if if Samantha Brinker, who might be overseeing this, is available, or if it's something you can cover, Allison.
Yes, Commissioner, I can take that. So the grant for ten thousand dollars has a fifty percent match, so the total project cost will be twenty thousand dollars. So we are only expecting to spend that amount at this time. We're going to work that into the budget with that grant application.
Thank you, Ms. Brinker. That's fine. Any other questions or comments from members of the board? So I'll move for adoption of the resolution for the two thousand and twenty five PICO Green Region Open Space Program for Renninger Park with the ten thousand dollar commitment and the funding of the remaining costs of the project.
Thank you, Commissioner Zignifeld. Any comments or questions on this motion? I just want to add that I think this is a, as as we look to our citizens committees and the good work that they do and our efforts to engage them additionally, I think this is a great opportunity to engage our Shade Tree Advisory Committee, not only perhaps on the the grant application, but certainly after we get our grant and have to decide what kind of trees we're going to be restoring and putting in this space. So hopefully, Manager Elliott, Ms. Brinker, we can engage them through this process. Any other comments or questions? All right, seeing none, all those in favor adopting the resolution authorizing staff to submit the grant stated therein, say aye.
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 And there being no other matters in front of us, I'll move for approval of the minutes from the November fifth Public Works meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Zignifeld. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor accepting the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner. On to item number eleven, the Building and Zoning Committee also met on November fifth, but we have no business to bring before the board. So absent any business, I will move for approval of the Building and Zoning Committee meeting minutes from November fifth. Any comments or questions there? All right, seeing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
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 Thank you all. On to item number twelve, public safety. Commissioner Brockington.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I want to thank President Arman for pinch hitting for myself and Commissioner Lewis on our public safety meeting that was held on November twelfth. We have one item to vote on tonight. Item twelve A, adoption of an ordinance amending chapter two eighty five Vehicle and Traffic, section two eighty five dash forty-three Street and Parking Regulation of Cheltenham Township to restrict parking on a portion of Surrey Road, which was actually spoken about earlier today on public comment. I call for our, if there's no questions from any other commissioners, I would call for an ordinance number from our township manager.
Yes, that's ordinance number twenty five zero four dash twenty five. Commissioner.
I'm going to call, roll.
Yes, yes. Commissioner Arman.
Aye.
Commissioner Brockington.
Aye.
Commissioner Cherico.
Aye.
Commissioner Lewis.
Aye.
Commissioner Norris.
Aye.
Commissioner Rapaport.
Aye.
And Commissioner Zignifeld.
Aye.
Thank you, commissioners, and I took over our president's role. I'm sorry about that. So now I'm going to move forward just for the approval of our minutes for the meeting which was held on November twelfth.
Thank you for that motion, Commissioner Brockington. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Excellent work. Item number thirteen, Public Affairs, and Commissioner Rapaport, please.
Thank you. Good evening again. We don't have anything to vote on tonight except the meeting minutes. So I'll let you call that question.
Thank you, Commissioner Rapaport. We have a motion by Commissioner Rapaport for approval of the minutes of the Public Affairs Committee meeting. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you. Onto item number fourteen, the Finance Committee. Commissioner Norris has a lot of work ahead of him this evening, so take it away, Commissioner Norris.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met on November twelfth, and there are several items which need our review this evening. The first is fourteen A, Authorization for the Township Manager to enter into an electric procurement contract beginning December first, two thousand and twenty five, for a period of twenty-four months using option B, one hundred percent green pricing. beginning December 1st, 2025, for a period of 24 months using option B, 100% green pricing.
Any questions or comments? Do we need, yes, Mr. President, Commissioner Armin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was just wondering if maybe Ms. Elliott could give us just by way of background, we had a lot of discussion over this. It's a little confusing, frankly, and I think it's probably worth a brief summary. So, perhaps Manager Elliott or some other member of staff could just give us a summary of what it is that we're authorizing in this agenda item, if that's okay, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, absolutely and very appropriate.
So, yes, this is a contract for procurement. We went out to the market to receive quotes for various prices per kilowatt hour. In the past, we've used Constellation Energy and their numbers are coming back very high. So, we reached out to a brokerage company that goes out to the market and researches a number of different top-rated energy procurement companies. And they were able to provide quotes that were a better pricing. One of the challenges in kind of figuring out where the sweet spot is for the township is trying to figure out how many months that we should look at. They have contracts for 12, 24, 36, and 48 months, whether a fixed rate or kind of one that looks at what they call the, I forget what they call it, I'm sorry. But every June or July, they will evaluate our energy usage and may adjust it if there's any significant swings in our usage. And then there's some that are a little bit more aggressive in those swings. So, what we are looking at is one that has kind of balances the the rate, gives us a little bit of stability, but not as totally fixed so that we have a lower rate. And this is also looking at 100% green energy so that we can meet our 2030 goals for for having 100% clean renewable energy. And you'll see that there's option B. Option B is the company that was selected for the best option.
Absolutely. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you. And I'm not trying to step on anyone else's toes, but during the the discussion in the committee, there were, I think, two takeaways, at least from my point of view. One is that this this is a fairly significant expense for our township and something that we probably should make sure that we are looking at several months in advance and just tracking so that we can make sure we're hitting the market at the right time. And then there was a suggestion, I believe, from Commissioner Ziegmanfeld. Am I stepping on your toes? That I think is another takeaway and Commissioner Ziegmanfeld could elaborate, but that we should be looking at consortium pricing and engaging other public entities ourselves or joining other existing consortiums to ensure we're getting the best bang for our buck here. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Ziegmanfeld, did you want to add something?
Just, you know, I think in the timeframe that we have, it would be difficult to do both the investigation and the negotiation. So, I think we have a two-year period now, and in that two-year period, we should reach out to a multitude of municipalities similar to what we do in some of the recycling and some of the other areas where we're looking to consolidate and save money and not be in there you know, competing in a marketplace that we have no control over. So, I think it's a great period of time for us. So, thank you, Commissioner Armin. You can't step on these size 13s that easily. Commissioner Cherico.
Oh, so help me understand if we have to make this decision or else what happens?
Yes. So, what happens is our contract expires as of the December meter reading. And then we would be without a contract. So, then our energy prices are based on the market rate. So, there's a PJM has a market. So, every day, these rates change. So, we'll be subject to those changes daily. And this locks in a rate for this two-year period of time. So, it protects us for those rate swings. This is a sorry, this is a, is generally a higher period of time, but the trend and the forecasts are that our energy rates are going to be increasing exponentially over time. So, even if springtime might be a little lower, it may still be higher than where we are locking in for right now. So, the longer the the period of time that we lock in, the kind of the lower the prices are. So, there's kind of, it's a very delicate balancing act trying to figure out what is the best number for us.
And so, if we did not pass this today and we fell out of our contract and we weren't able to vote on something until December 17th or whenever our next meeting is, we could vote on a different contract beginning December 17th. We might be for a period of several weeks, we would be out of contract. I don't feel terribly comfortable moving forward with this. I think that it was presented to us last week. I like the idea of of exploring a consortia or very consortium or exploring multiple consortia to determine whether or not we can find savings over the next two years. And if we have to for a month, be, you know, privy to the market fluctuations, I think that perhaps in the long run, it could save us. You know, it might come back to haunt us as well, but I just don't completely feel easy with being presented this and then having to vote on it the next week.
I'll just add a couple of comments. I agree that we need to look at this further in advance next time it comes up for renewal so that we have more time to explore it. But we did have an independent broker present us with numerous options from different utilities for this for this service. We have selected the one that is the most advantageous at this time. I also agree that consortium options and pricing should be considered in the future. But our understanding is at the current time in Montgomery County, there are, there aren't any current consortiums available to us. It is something that we should be exploring and talking to our neighboring townships as well as talking to the county about setting up such a consortium. And just one other point, which I don't think's been mentioned so far, is the the authorization that we're asking for tonight. The option we've selected includes 100% green pricing. It is worth noting that Sheltonham has a commitment to sustainability, a commitment to the environment. And the 100% green pricing does cost some extra dollars, but the dollars are actually fairly small compared to the not going with the green pricing. Any other comments before I move this move for move for approval of this authorization? Oh, yes, Commissioner, sorry.
So, what would be the false implications if we were out of contract?
It's it's unknown. The prices change every day. So, the prices that we looked at last week will be different tomorrow when I get the contract to sign. So, I don't know that answer.
Well, if I if I may, Mr. Chairman, what we do know is from the time that we got the quote from the broker in the beginning of November until the time that we reviewed it last week, the price went up and it's going to go up more. So, there is value to locking in the price, notwithstanding the good points that Commissioner Cherico makes. The price is going up. So, I think I think we have an obligation to look at consortia, to look at other strategies to reduce our energy costs. But we also have an obligation to make sure that we're not being too risky with our with our decision here on on energy purchases.
Okay. So, I'll make the motion to authorize the Township Manager to enter into this contract as stated.
All right. Any comments or additional comments or questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Ayes have it. Commissioner Norris, please.
Thank you. Number 14B on, under the Finance Committee, and that is adoption of the preliminary 2026 operating in capital budgets. Before I ask for comments, just so it's clear what we're doing. Item B, we're going to make, move to adopt on a preliminary basis, these two budgets. Then item C is, would be the authorization to have a public hearing. This public hearing, as noted under item C, would take place December 17th. So, December and prior to that date, the preliminary budget will be posted on the township website in its completion. Between then and now, the public has the opportunity to contact any commissioners, to contact the township staff. Actually, on the website, you can just enter your comments on the website if you wish, but you're welcome to contact me or any other commissioner. On December 10th, we would be adopting, there would be a vote to adopt the budget. So, this is the preliminary. This is the preliminary budget that we're voting on. On December 10th, we would be voting to actually adopt the budget. At that time, public meeting, that's a Zoom meeting. The public will have the opportunity to make any comments. December 17th, there's the vote on the final budget. That is on Zoom and in here at Curtis Hall, and the public will have the opportunity to speak at that time. So, there'll be two additional meetings as well as you have the opportunity to contact commissioners directly. Okay. Having stated that, any questions or comments on adopting the preliminary 26 operating capital budgets? Commissioner Ziegmanfeld.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I just think it's important for the public to know, and I'm sure they do, that besides the work that was done by the the staff and the leadership of the of the various departments over a period of time, our township manager, our Director of Fiscal Affairs and the board, we've had multiple public meetings in which lots of information, lots of disclosure. We took on a lot of information and we, in fact, have made modifications and made changes on the basis of information that was received and was continuing to be investigated by the various departments and anything that was received from our public. We know that there are questions that still remain, but I think it's important to know even more this year with the addition of Open Gov, we've we've been able to to get to get a hold of and capture a lot of the detail that in previous years wasn't as easily accessible. And on that basis, I think we're closer along with the revisions from that original 25% increase down to, I think we're at 8%, nine, excuse me, 9%. It's a reflection of the continuing amount of work that's being done. This is the preliminary budget that will be subject to adoption, you know, on that December 10th time period. But if, are there other pieces of information, other things that we learn that will enable us to change some of the numbers or work to the benefit of our public and our taxpayers, we would do that. So, I think it's important that this is yet another step in a very extensive set of stages that we've been doing to be fiscally responsible and reflect as much austerity as is possible in the condition that that budgets come to us and that some of the obligations we have that we have limited control of. So, thank you for the work of the staff, work of the board and that and the input that we've received from various constituencies and from individuals and all that has been taken and will continue to still be taken into consideration.
Thank you, Commissioner Ziegmanfeld. Commissioner Cherico.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Norris. One of those areas that is seeing cuts to the budget is the library. And I want to thank those who have called and advocated for the library these past several weeks. I do appreciate hearing from neighbors who care about our library system, and I want you to know that I share that same passion. For the past three years, I personally have hosted public events that raised funds for CTLS and one of our volunteer fire companies. And I mention that for no other reason but to show that we're on the same team when it comes to the value our libraries bring to Sheltonham. As a commissioner, though, I also have a responsibility to confront the full financial picture of this township. I know some, but not all of our residents have had the opportunity to attend our public budget meetings. And for those who haven't, you should know that the township is facing a structural deficit that has been building for decades. We have hit a point where inaction will result in municipal taxes potentially doubling or so within a short period of time. The proposed budget makes reductions across every department except our volunteer fire companies. These decisions are difficult for me to make, but they are not and cannot be made in a vacuum. This year, we funded the library with just over $1.8 million. We will continue to be the primary funder of this library with about 1.7 or so in 2026. When I make these decisions, I'm thinking first and foremost about the residents on fixed incomes who are already struggling to pay and to stay in their homes. Tax increases of the magnitude that we were talking about would push people out of this community. And that, I would argue, is far worse than having to cut spending in the library or in any other department. As a commissioner, I'm assigned to sit on the library board, and I've been in active discussions with library leadership this week with Commissioner Rappaport just days ago to discuss ways to potentially reorganize or operate to minimize the impact on the patrons. The cuts are not desirable, but they are necessary. And as we make this vote, I ask those here tonight, those watching later on YouTube, to join me in finding ways to support CTLS other than through municipal funding. I would welcome your partnership in community-driven fundraising efforts, and I know the library management and board would too. The more voices and hands we have behind this, the stronger our library system will remain. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Cherico. Any other comments? No, no other comments. Okay. And as was stated by my fellow commissioners, I was remiss in not thanking our staff for the outstanding work that they've done in preparing these budgets, particularly Mr. Rubin for open his work on Open Gov, which facilitated our obtaining the information in a better form as well as the transparency of it. And our finance director, Ms. Salerno, she did a great job and deserves our appreciation for that. Okay. 14B, I'll move the adoption of the preliminary 2026 operating capital budgets.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Norris. Any additional questions on the motion? All right. Seeing no comments or questions, all those in favor of the motion to adopt the preliminary 2026 operating capital budgets, say aye.
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 And similarly, I'll make a motion to authorize to advertise a public hearing to hear public comment prior to considering the adoption of the 2026 operating capital budgets at our regularly scheduled meeting on December 17th, 2025.
We have a motion on the table. Any comments or questions? Manager Elliott, did you have something to add on this item?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to note as part of the advertisement portion of this, the budget is that the budget ordinance will be made available on our township website by the end of the week. It can be found at sheltonhampa.gov/budget. And then the following week, we will be making our budget book available online as well. This is through the new Open Gov system. I'm really excited about it. So, it will provide more detail on the budget and and a lot of more information about a lot of the discussions that went on throughout the budget workshop meetings. So, if you're looking for an explanation behind the black and white numbers, this budget book should be able to provide you a lot more information to help understand the decisions that went into this year's budget or next year's budget.
Thank you, Manager Elliott. Any other? Any other comments or questions? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor of authorizing the advertising of the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. 14D is adoption of the following resolutions, authorizing submissions of grant applications under the Department of Community and Economic Development's Local Share Account Grant Program for the following projects. And we'll take them one at a time. The first is $1 million grant for Curtis Arboretum Accessibility Project. Do we need any description? Are we okay? Okay. So I'll, I'll make that motion for, to adopt the grant for the $1 million Curtis Arboretum Project.
Any comments or questions? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion for $1 million to, for $1 million grant for Roland Community Center Improvements Phase Two.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Norris. Any comments or question on the motion?
I guess a comment from me, I'm very happy to see Roland Community Center on this list.
Thank you, Commissioner Brockington. Any other comments or questions? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
14D, number three, a $1 million grant for Glen Side Pool, I'll move for adoption.
Thank you, Commissioner Norris. Any comments or questions there? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Norris.
There being, that covers all the items that required our attention this evening. I'll make a motion to approve the Finance Committee meeting minutes.
Comments or questions there? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor accepting the Finance Committee meeting minutes from November 12th, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all, and thank you, Commissioner Norris. Onto item number 15, consider approval of the recommendations of the Pension Board and acceptance of its regular meeting minutes dated November 7th, 2025. We actually do have one item that requires board attention. Item 15A, authorization to rebalance the township's pension plans to bring overweight U.S. stocks closer to the target of 6% in each plan by moving overweight assets to U.S. fixed income. This was a recommendation from our financial advisor on those pension plans, and I will move the authorization. Any comments or questions on that matter? Commissioner Norris, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. So just to clarify this, since I attended the Pension Board meeting along with Commissioner Rappaport, in case she wishes to make any comment, the, I'm going to clarify the wording here. The authorization is to rebalance the township pension plans, reducing the overweight of U.S. stocks in each plan to 6%. It's currently in the 7% to 11% overweight, to 6% moving the assets to the U.S. fixed income. So that's what I'm going to recommend the wording. What, what this does is, our guide, our plan states that we have a range for assets and for bonds that we can work within. Currently, the U.S. stocks are overweight. They're significantly overweight. They're still within our range, so we could leave it as it is. But the recommendation from our pension advisor was just to reduce that overweight of U.S. stocks compared to bonds. That's what this does.
Thank you, Commissioner Norris. Thanks for explaining that. Commissioner Rappaport?
I, I was going to say something, I'm going to pass.
Okay. Commissioner Sigmundfeld.
Yeah. Mr. President, Mr. Chairman, particularly Commissioner Norris, if, if I'm not mistaken, we're mandated in the pension performance of the pension funds to a, a percentage, I think the, the imposed percentage is probably about 8% if I'm not mistaken, or it has been in the past. So part of what we have to do is we're obligated to make sure that we make contributions to the MMO to achieve that level. So if the market overperforms, it gives us a little bit of flexibility. But in most cases, we're obligated to make sure that we come close to complying with that number. Is that correct?
That's, yes, that is correct. I, I don't know if we're.
It's self-imposed.
Right. It is self-imposed, that 8%. Yeah, correct. I'm sorry.
It's okay. Thank you. So I, what it does is it makes us dependent on the advice that we get and to make sure that we're always adjusting our portfolio to come as close as we can to comply with that.
I, I won't disagree with that. I kind of think that they're separate issues that you're considering. That's, that 8% is what's, what we have built into the plan, and that does impact our MMO contribution for 8%, rate of return. It's our target rate of return that's built into the plan.
Right. In order to protect our, all of our retirees and to protect the integrity of our pension plans. Okay, I just, I think it's important for people to understand that we operate with something like this with obligations that we've taken on in order to protect the integrity of, you know, our pension plan.
So what, what, what I will say is the, the Pension Board, as well as the Board of Commissioners, does everything it can do with the support and guidance of our financial advisor.
And actuary.
And actuary on the pension plan to maximize our returns on all pensions. We have return goals that we try to meet, but frankly, the, the hope is that we exceed those, those rates of return. In this particular case, this, this 6% reference has nothing to do with the rate of return. It has to do with the, the balance of investment between, between equity, which is stocks, and fixed income, which is bonds. And based on the guidance we receive from our advisor, the decision or the recommendation from the Pension Board was to readjust the balance in order to take advantage of not only the returns from fixed income, but also avoid any volatility in the equity market. So that's, that's what formed the basis of what appeared at first to be a fairly simple agenda item.
And that, that's absolutely correct. It should also be known to the community that our being overweight in U.S. stocks, and this was, we will still be overweight in U.S. stocks after this authorization, our being overweight in U.S. stocks has benefited us, benefited us and the pension members substantially over the past several years.
Commissioner Rappaport.
So, yeah, there was a lengthy discussion about what the future holds in both the bond market and the equities. And the idea was that we had seen growth in the equities, we were worried about risk, what was going to be happening. And so that is why the rebalancing was, was recommended.
Thank you. All right. Any other comments or questions? All right. So I can't remember if we have a motion, but I will make a motion to authorize the rebalancing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all. All right. That is the only item of business before the Board of Commissioners from the Pension Board, so I will therefore move for approval of the Pension Board meeting minutes, where you could read more about this agenda item if the, if it should strike your fancy. So with that, all those in favor of accepting the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Item number 16, old business. Is there any old business for the Board of Commissioners? We'll start with Commissioner Cherico, please.
Thank you very much. I want to take a moment on a night when we are facing a budget that includes significant cuts to our expenses in every department to point out something that's unnecessarily costing this township hundreds of thousands of your tax dollars every year. For those who don't know, Cheltenham Township is currently being sued by six former commissioners who once sat at this very table. They're suing to reinstate lifetime pensions and health benefits that they voted to give themselves years ago. To be clear, being a commissioner is a part-time job. Each of us on this board earns $6,000 a year. None of us do that for the money. We do it because we love Cheltenham Township, because we want to serve our neighbors, and because we want to help shape this community into the best version of itself. And I should say, I am speaking for myself here. We do not, I do not receive a pension, I do not get health insurance from the township, and there is no promise of health insurance after this. So let me tell you a quick story. Decades ago, sometime in the, sometime in the 1980s, commissioners voted to grant themselves some very nice perks, health coverage for themselves and their families, plus pensions, but it cost quite a bit. I read the Finance Committee meetings back in 2014, and I saw the township was going to dip into its fund balance to make ends meet. A couple of months later, the commissioners, recognizing the, the expense of the perks, voted to eliminate health insurance for life and pension for all future commissioners while maintaining their own. Fast forward to 2022, the township's financial situation had become untenable. The board, made up of some of the people sitting right beside me, voted to eliminate pension and health benefits for all former commissioners. That decision triggered a firestorm, and six former commissioners filed suit. Up until now, we've never read their names, I'm going to do so. Morton Simon Jr., Thomas Ellis, Robert Gerhard Jr., Charles McEwen, Andrew Sharkey, and Michael Suavola. They filed a lawsuit in 2023 to get those benefits back. That lawsuit, now about to enter its fourth year, has cost Cheltenham Township taxpayers roughly a quarter million dollars in legal fees. After sitting through months of budget meetings and seeing how deeply our department heads had to cut to help the township climb out of its structural deficit, it's disheartening to watch my predecessors continue pressing for health and retirement benefits they know this township simply cannot afford. So let me be clear, I understand that health insurance is expensive, and I believe health coverage should be a right in this country. But until this happens, I can't in good conscience expect taxpayers to foot the bill for lifetime benefits for once-part-time public servants. The legal fight alone is draining $100,000 a year from our budget, and reinstating those benefits would cost twice that every year indefinitely. So tonight, I'm calling on these six former commissioners, Mr. Simon, Mr. Ellis, Mr. Gerhard, Mr. McEwen, and Mr. Sharkey, and Mr. Suavola, to do the right thing, drop your lawsuit. Our taxpayers are hurting enough, and this lawsuit must end. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Cherico, for those excellent words. Is there any other old business for this evening's Board of Commissioners meeting? Commissioner Brockton, did you have some? All right. Thank you all, and thank you again, Commissioner Cherico. Onto item number 17, new business. We have one item on the agenda, that is item 17A, consider approval of a professional services contract with the PA Chiefs Association in the amount of $18,000 to assist in the search for a tier, new chief of police. That's right. It, it does seem awkward to have this agenda item with a chief that we all know and love and really appreciate all his many years of service sitting right here, but, but it is a necessary thing that we do, and we want to do it in conjunction with Chief Slaven so that he continues to have the excellent positive impact on the future of the police department in here in Cheltenham Township. So I will move for approval of the professional services contract with the PA Chiefs of Police Association. Are there any comments or questions about this line item? Manager Elliott, would you kindly describe for the public the process that got us to the point of working with the PA Chiefs Association?
Yes, certainly. We solicited proposals from multiple organizations like the PA Chiefs Association that assist townships like ours in selecting not only police chiefs, but other, 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 I guess, officers in police departments, and also assist with testing and promotions for these officers. We had received recommendations not only from our chief, but from other professionals in order to build this list. We received proposals from four different contractors and met with several of them to interview them, and we believe not only based on the cost, but also our feeling with the rapport with PA Chiefs Association that they would be a good selection. Part of this process is they will provide professional police consultants to facilitate the testing process and provide their expert opinion on how potential candidates have performed so that we can have a really good assessment of potential candidates. Then we will also be able to do our own interviews once we have the top candidates through that testing process.
Thank you, Manager Elliott. And just to be clear, Chief Slaven's retiring. Just, I don't want that, I don't want that to be hanging out there. Yeah, sorry. But, but again, we, we thank Chief Slaven for all, all his great work over the many years of service to this township, and we, we appreciate his efforts in finding someone who could continue his great legacy. So thank you. All right. Any other questions on this professional services contract? Seeing none, I'll move for approval. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Are there any other items for new business for this evening's meeting? All right. Seeing none, we will close new business and go to citizens forum. Do we have any citizens who are interested in speaking? Good evening.
It has a great, ooh, there we go. Hey, good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Liza Maris, I'm a resident of Windco. You may have seen on social media, or even regular media now, that ICE is incredibly violent. You may have seen the high-profile incident recently where a judge intervened in order to check ICE for using tear gas endangering children during their Halloween parade. She now expects them to come to her courtroom every single day with video of use of force. It's not happening out there somewhere, though. It's happening here. ICE was in Montgomery County on Halloween, on school road near a school, violent, ripping people from their vehicles and hunting people. They were hunting in Montgomery County for hours on Halloween. No parent should have to question if trick-or-treating is safe, no child should have to stay inside on Halloween. I'm sickened by this, as I'm sure you are too, but we didn't have a judge to save us. They got away with that. There is, however, no evidence to suggest that the local police force assisted in this hours-long manhunt, perhaps because that particular township has a vocal citizenry and support of their recent welcoming act. The day before, however, on October 30th, Philadelphia police violently attacked protesters in support of ICE activity. Philadelphia has been a sanctuary city for a long time, but it didn't seem to matter that day. And my point is this, that a policy is not enough. We need to educate police, we need to educate the community, we need to translate the resolution still, and we need to hold police accountable. It's not words, but actions that are going to save the lives of our neighbors. I see that you're spending quite a lot of money on hiring a new police chief. It has been made quite clear that residents are energized around this issue. They fill this hall, they donate money, they risk their lives. They do not want local police to help ICE. We thank you for your resolution and for your words, now we look to your actions. There are now over 100 neighbors kidnapped from Montgomery County since May. There's been an uptick in ICE activity and the violence they use and the number of citizens they're taking, cities that they're taking, and the dehumanizing conditions in the prisons, and their proximity to our township. They are coming, they are getting closer. Are we ready? They are coming. They are getting closer. Are we ready? There are a lot of things we can't control, but you can control this one. Local police chiefs control local politics, and we want a police chief who protects us from violent men trying to kidnap people. It shouldn't have to be said, but here we are. So I'm asking you this. What will you do to hold police accountable to the wishes of the residents? What happens if one or more of them violates the policy? How will you make this a central factor in hiring a new chief? What if the PA Police Chiefs Association produces a top 10 like you paid them to do, but they can't seem to find a police chief that fits our unique needs in Cheltenham? This is your job, and we need you to do it. It's literally life or death. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Liza.
Please state your name, area of township where you live. Thank you.
Yeah, Kaylee Taylor. I'm part of Ward Two. So back pecking off of her comments, we are so very grateful to you guys for passing a resolution. But as we have seen, what was going up in Norristown is that they came out saying, hey, we will not, our police will not help. And that meant nothing because they went back on it. There's nothing to hold them accountable for what they've done. They promised they wouldn't get involved. They did. So what's going to stop that from happening here in Cheltenham? We need to know what will happen if a police officer violates the resolution, and we need that in writing as soon as possible, because as has been pointed out, we have a change of power with our police chief. We also have a change of power coming with some of our commissioners. We want to make sure that this is written in stone, so that we're protected when y'all get to take your break. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
My name's Anne Harrower. My name's Anne Harrower. I'm from Glen Side. I'd like it on the record, in response to Agenda Item Number Nine. I'm a licensed DMT, and I've responded to overdoses of marijuana, and I'm concerned about the health and safety of township residents and first responders. And I'm wondering why the township approved there to be a medical marijuana dispensary in our township. And I also am wondering, why do you ask for public comment? If, like, I'm wondering, when do you take our concerns into consideration? Like, for example, if I had made this comment right after the public hearing, would you have considered it before accepting or adopting the ordinance? Thank you.
Thank you for those questions. So to answer at least part of it, the item that we voted on tonight, and typically most items, are heard at least, are presented at least twice. Once at a committee meeting during either the first Wednesday or the second Wednesday of the month, at which time there's usually a lot of discussion, and those committees make recommendations to the board for tonight's meeting. So that would be the second time. And then during this meeting, anyone who wants to comment on an agenda item can do it either right up front during item number, I guess it's four, can do it generally during the agenda item, particularly on a public hearing, as you mentioned, and then again, now at Citizens Forum. In addition to that, this board is always open to commentary, suggestions, criticisms on any agenda item or any other township matter that we get daily, multiple times a day, through email and phone calls, et cetera. Our agendas are usually posted, at least the first version, sometimes they get amended. As you can see, there's some red on this one. Usually get posted the Friday before the Wednesday meeting. So there's an opportunity, and they're up on the website. There's an opportunity for the public to view them, either make comments early or come to the meeting prepared to make comments as well. So we are extremely open to all comments, all criticisms, all suggestions on any of the items that we hear on, either in a committee or on a legislative meeting. We appreciate you being here, and welcome not only your comments tonight, but anytime in the future. Yeah, Commissioner Cherico.
Can you clarify, though, we didn't approve for a medical marijuana dispensary to come in today. That's not what we did.
That's correct. The ordinance that you adopted indicates where that lawful use can go if it was proposed in the township, under what condition?
And we can't say that we can't allow, right? If it's a lawful use, we can't say that's not allowed here in Cheltenham Township.
Correct.
Right, based upon Pennsylvania state requirements.
And it's already here.
Commissioner Rappaport.
Yeah, and if I heard the speaker correctly, she's involved with, yeah. Okay, well, thank you for that. That's a nice service, and we appreciate that. Yeah. This, as they've pointed out, this came before the board about six years ago. So it was discussed at length. Went through all the proper zoning procedures. We actually, the board at the time toured it. We really held their feet to the fire as far as the regulations that they would be following. We all toured it. We wanted to make sure that as responsible, that they would uphold their license and be as responsible and responsive to some of the conditions that we did have at the time. So, yeah, just to help clarify. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Rappaport, for adding that color. Ma'am, your turn. Please, your name and the area of township. You may want to bring the microphone down a little bit, so that we can make sure we all hear everything you have to say.
I'm Madeline McMahon, and I'm out of the Lamont district. Hi, Jeff. I am simply just going to take a sentence to say that while the other speakers really talked about the emotional impact, as well as the physical risk to our citizenry of increased ICE activity in our neighborhoods, I would ask you too to consider isolating us as a township from their activities in terms of getting sued, because if our police are doing some of their dirty work, they want to pick a fight, it's like a kid in a schoolyard. You know, he picks a fight and then brings his brother over to come and solve the problem. These, some of these fights are emergencies of their own making, you know? And my feeling is that as a township, we have to protect our pocketbooks too, because we could get sued for playing their game. And that's my point, you know, so please think about that part, too.
Thank you.
Given that we have to reduce things in our budgets, you know, maybe protect our pocketbooks a little more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And just to be clear, while I understand this may not be where everybody wants it to be, the township did pass a resolution that specifically articulates that the Cheltenham Township Police does not engage in federal immigration enforcement. So just to make sure that everybody's on the same page with that item.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Alicia Kinslow, reside at 82 Cook Road, and I'm on the Cheltenham Township Library Board. I wanted to thank you all for your words today, Jeff, your speech today. I'm looking forward to reviewing the budget, the preliminary budget, and very thoroughly going through what has been proposed. I wanted to just comment, and I know Julie had her hand raised. I'm sure she has a few other things to say as well, that we, as the library board, continue to try to be and will be good stewards of the township's money. And I don't know, she presented earlier that the return on investment is almost double or triple what you are giving us. So approximately $2.9 million are saved to Cheltenham residents based on the money that we do receive. So the benefit that we do give our township is extremely important. The cuts that we have or that we are facing will require us to run even leaner. I know there's been discussion outside of what we are looked to be able to do with those cuts, but again, those are decisions that still have to be made. I ask, I hope, that as you are taking public comments, as a young lady back there stated, that as we are telling you how we feel that you are still taking into consideration what you're hearing, that you're not coming at this with closed minds, that your decisions are not already made up, and that you're welcoming the voices you're going to hear over the next couple of weeks. So again, I want to thank you for your time and your efforts. We continue to want to work with you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kinslow, and thank you for your service to not only the library, but our community. Anyone else here in the hall? All right, going to Zoom, Ms. Haywood, welcome back.
Hi. Thank you again for another opportunity to share some comments and really questions with you. I wanted to thank Ms. Kinslow for getting up, and I really appreciate the comments you made. I will not repeat anything that she said, but I just have a couple of questions. When is the preliminary line item budget? When will that be posted? You probably said that, but I may have missed it.
Yeah, it's my understanding that it'll be posted by the end of the week.
Okay, and that'll be on the township's website?
I'm going to be corrected. Sorry, Ms. Haywood. Hold on one second.
Sorry. So our budget ordinance, which is not fully line item, it'll be a budget summary, will be available on our website by the end of the week. The budget book, is that not working? Sorry about that. So the budget summary ordinance will be available on our website by the end of the week, and the line item budget will be available next week online.
Okay, thank you. And a couple other questions. Based on the budget summary, and maybe it's a line item question as well, what is currently proposed as the budget cut to Cheltenham Township Library System?
The, there's a proposed reduction from $1.8 million to $1.7 million.
Okay. Thank you. So again, $100,000 reduction. Correct? If my math is correct.
Yeah, your math is correct. It's a 5% reduction from 1.8 to 1.7.
Okay. And again, kind of back to what Ms. Kinslow had stated, we're hoping that the commissioners remain open-minded to kind of reevaluating, looking at that budget even more closely before you adopt it. We know you will. And just a general question, what other information do the commissioners need to reevaluate CTLS's proposed budget cut? Can you answer that for us? Because we'll be glad to give it to you.
I'm not sure what else we would need, but certainly we can. I mean, we received a presentation from the head of the library system during our budget workshop. I assume nothing was held back during that meeting. So we based many of our decisions on that. We've based our decisions on a lot of the feedback that we've received. But that being said, if there is information that you think would be helpful as part of this continued dialogue, we're certainly open to hearing what it is.
Okay, and just two other related questions real quickly. Are there other departments that have received a 5% cut in their budget?
Absolutely.
Oh, okay. And then this question is specifically for Mr. Cherico. Thank you for your comments. But I just wanted to be clear, are you suggesting that CTLS independently raise the amount the township currently appropriates to CTLS? So.
No, I was suggesting that community members, like myself and others who care about the library system, to gather together to help in fundraising efforts and offering their time to pitch in. I think what I said was that I'm asking, as we make this vote, I ask those here tonight and those watching later, people who are concerned about the library, to find ways to support CTLS. I would welcome your partnership in community-driven fundraising efforts, and I know the library management and board would too. So I was asking the community, many of whom, as you know, have reached out to me via phone and email, and asking them to, you know, turn their advocacy into action here and to help raise money for the library system, because I know, you know, it's not lost on me that this will require some pain and belt tightening. And so that was my request of those that were watching.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. And again, you know, we are definitely in support of additional fundraising as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Haywood. I think Commissioner Rappaport has a comment.
Yeah, I just wanted to help round out some of your answer to Ms. Haywood. As you know, in addition, we've been getting information even after we kind of grilled Ms. Moran at the budget workshop, at that public workshop. We got a lot of information there that we hadn't heard, and then we followed up with two meetings with a number of board members and your members of your library board and Ms. Moran. So we've been getting increased information over the last month and a half, two months, and we appreciate that, and that gives us a lot more insight, and we welcome more. Anything you want to add to it?
Okay, thank you very much. And I just wanted to applaud Liza for her comments on the immigration issue.
Thank you, Ms. Haywood. Okay, Ms. Melton, I see your hand is raised.
Hi, yes, but I think Ms. Greta Hand was up before mine. And I would let her go first. Is that okay? Yeah, just to keep it in order.
Okay, thank you. I wasn't really aware.
I'm sorry. What just happened? Ms. Melton, do you have a comment or no?
Of course, you know I do, but Ms. Greta was up first. So I was giving her her.
Yeah, no, Ms. Melton, you have your three minutes now. We'll get to Ms. Bunin in a second.
Okay. Well, I'm not going to take three minutes. One, chief, I hate to see you go, just like I hate to see Ms. Commissioner Rappaport go, okay? Two, back to this marijuana thing. My question is, I understand you have to follow state laws, and you can't stop a business from wanting to join into the community. But as I heard, marijuana is only legal in the states. It's not legal by the feds. And why do we have it? And number two, do we have an ordinance, since we're going to allow it, that you don't allow it to be smoked down the street? Because I'm getting sick and tired of coming out of my backyard to have to smell the joint-smoking, pot-smoking marijuana smell, and it's stench because it's not pure, because the manufacturers changed the ingredients. It smells. Can't they do it in their house? If, in fact, they have a legal medical reason for getting it, do we have an ordinance for that? And if not, I'll be the first one to sign the ordinance that they should not have public smoking, like they have an ordinance for public drinking. So that's one of the things I wanted to say. Oh, also, suggestion. Myself and another lady seem to have been a little confused on exactly, and we spent some time, and thank you, Commissioner Rappaport, for asking the township solicitor to make it plain. But also what may have helped when we're looking at what you send for attachments is that you put the definitions of what things are first. So then when we're reading, we know what this definition means when we're reading the next thing in line. I think that's it, and I think I'm under three minutes.
You are. Thank you, Ms. Melton.
You're welcome.
Just one comment to clarify. And it doesn't require any additional comment, but other than, this is, the ordinance deals with. The, and it doesn't require any additional comment, but other than this is, the ordinance deals with medical marijuana, not recreational marijuana. So I just want to make sure that everybody's clear on that. Thank you. Ms. Bunin.
Hi, I'm Greta Bunin. I live in Elkins Park. And I'm here tonight because I wanted to talk about the traffic signal at Old York Road and Shelton Hills Drive. So it's, so the part I'm most familiar with is, well, crossing from the west side of Old York Road to the east side on the south part of the intersection, which is how I walk to the train station. I've crossed there. I don't even want to know how many, how many times. And it's really not safe. So when the walk sign comes on and I walk into the crosswalk, cars on Shelton Hills Drive have a green light. They can cross Old York Road, which is fine. They also can turn, make a right turn south towards Philadelphia, which puts them into the crosswalk where I'm walking or pedestrians are walking. So it would be much safer if the intersection was set up the way it is at Old York Road and Church, where it's changed fairly recently, where the, when the walk signs come on, the walk signs in all directions are on and all traffic is stopped. That is really much safer. And at the intersection I'm talking about, it particularly worries me that now we have talking, walk, you know, we have, the traffic signal talks to you, presumably to help people who don't have great vision. So that when the signal says the walk sign is on, it's somewhat terrifying to think that someone who can't see well would walk into the crosswalk and think that they are safe crossing Old York Road.
Thank you, Ms. Bunin, for those comments. I think Commissioner Cherico has a response or a comment.
Thank you, yeah. And I know exactly what Ms. Bunin is talking about, having walked that intersection multiple times as well. And I should say that those who are turning right there from Shelton Hills onto Old York Road, it's often hard to see people at that point, just the way that the roads are positioned. So when they're turning right, I recognize how difficult it is. When I'm walking, I'm always just kind of constantly looking behind me, making sure that anyone who is turning right can actually have enough time to see me. So I think if we, if there was a way of doing delayed, delayed walk signs, I think that that would be helpful. Thank you, Ms. Bunin.
Thank you, Commissioner Cherico. Perhaps this is something that we could ask staff to look into and circle back with us at a future meeting. Yeah. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other Citizens Forum for this evening's meeting? Once, twice? All right, we'll close Citizens Forum and I will move for adjournment, but not before, wishing everybody a very, very happy, safe and healthy Thanksgiving holiday. Please spend your Friday after Thanksgiving shopping in Cheltenham. And we'll see, we'll see in, I'm sorry. Free parking starts on Wednesday before Thanksgiving. So come on in and, and, you know, buy a few, start buying your holiday gifts early. So good evening, everybody. Thank you all. Happy Thanksgiving.
Good night everyone.
Good night. Same to you.
We have a motion for adjournment. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.